Authorized to employ personnel for existing positions necessary to meet the needs of the district subject to the ratification by this board at regularly scheduled school board meetings. However, upon ratification by this board, such employment shall be deemed effective as the date and time of approved hire by the superintendent. Approval of super- approval of boards designate for appeals of student suspensions and expulsions. The superintendent is hereby authorized to appoint a designate for appeals of student suspensions and expulsions. Approval of tuition waivers for students. The superintendent is hereby authorized to approve as appropriate waivers of tuition for students for the permissive and required reasons specified in Ohio Revised Code. Approval of superintendent's authorization to accept resignations. The superintendent is hereby authorized to accept resignations which have been submitted by employees during times when the board is not in session, subject to ratification by this board. However, upon ratification by this board, such resignation shall be deemed effective as the date and time of the superintendent's acceptance. Authorization of appointment of purchasing agent. The superintendent is hereby appointed as purchasing agent through the calendar year two thousand twenty-two for purchases within the annual appropriations measure. Authorization to participate in federal and state title and or chapter programs. The superintendent is hereby authorized to approve participation in state and federal title and or chapter programs as deemed appropriate for the district. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I'll second it. There's a second. Is there discussion on these items?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know about tuition for students.
So we just signed one of those yesterday. Um, what that means is if a family called on a hardship, so maybe somebody loses a job or there's a uh medical emergency with lots of, you know, extenuating circumstances, we're able to waive tuition. So it might be kindergarten tuition or preschool or school fees. So we don't think, we do a handful of those a year.
And how do those come? Do you, those typically come through the school principal? Other questions or discussion?
I have a question. About the employment of personnel and where it speaks about ratification by this board. Would that be, do you mean you find people or at what level? Or would we consider it administrative level? And I'm sure we're not going to listen to, you know, every person that you're going to hire. So is it, what does that mean when you would come back? You would say, oh, I have like, you know, hire so and so for an administrative level? Do you bring back those uh applicants, applicants to us?
Um, usually the selected person. So um typically the board directly hires the superintendent treasurer. And then Mark Pupar, our assistant superintendent, is over human resources. So he works with our administrative team, the principals or directors. And this would be for existing positions. That wouldn't be adding enough to you, but let's say we have a cook quit tomorrow. Um, obviously, we can't wait till the board, you know, we need to get moving on that, for example. Um, so we're able to go ahead. We don't have to wait between board meetings to hire someone. But then we bring it to you on the agenda approved. So you approve all hires. We're not bringing candidates to you typically. We're deciding who the person is, and then I recommend that person to you.
Yeah, so I can, yeah, I, I can see that at the other levels of the administrative levels.
Well, typically, if we're hiring an administrator, we usually talk to you in executive session about what we're thinking. But typically, um, Mark and I would be the ones who were selecting what principal would be or a director. Which is pretty standard.
Other discussion?
I would uh move to amend seven point two by striking out calendar year two thousand twenty-two and inserting remainder of FY two thousand twenty-one.
So everywhere where it references the calendar year, you're saying that there's an amendment on the floor to move that from calendar year to remainder of either fiscal or school year two thousand twenty-one.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
And just, just to correct, it should be fiscal year twenty-two for, is the, is the one we're in right now.
Fiscal years on the ending year.
That's all right.
So again, I'm going to lean on you, Mr. Treasurer, and I'm going to say there's a motion to amend the current item in front of us. I'm reading through my Roberts rules now, and I see that a uh, in order to amend a motion, it does require a second. Is that accurate?
I believe so.
Is there a second to the amendments of the motion for the remainder of calendar year to amend to fiscal year two thousand twenty-two?
I second.
There's a second. Is there a conversation as uh around the amendments? Doug, I, I might ask a question. Well, what's the thinking there?
Uh, I'm of the opinion that we need to do some research to see the viability of creating a business manager position. And this gives, grants us the time to do that between now and June. And we've got two brand-new school board members.
Sure.
And it's a little rough to come into your first meeting and commit for the balance of the year.
Agreed. Is, but is there something, if, if your idea is to consider a, a
Business manager position is going to change some of the authorities that are listed here.
Could we not make a change if that happened? I mean, if we were to hire a
We'd have to go back in and, and rescind these authorities. It'd be simpler just to set it now, review it over the next six months. And if there's no change, then we just uh extend this authority.
I'm not aware of any districts where they have a business manager, but the superintendent doesn't have all the authorities listed here.
Uh, my proposal would be that I'm going to propose, if it's financially viable, that that position report to the board.
So do you have a concern with the way that I've been approving things as purchasing agent?
I have a concern anytime I see an organization where all the power rests with one person.
That's why we have a treasurer who also looks at everything we buy. I mean, that's fine, that's less for me to do. I'm telling you, that's not
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't specify the purchasing agent.
Is that my principle?
So right now, there's a motion on the floor to amend from what's currently here in reference to the calendar year two thousand twenty-two to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two ending June thirty.
That is correct, and we have, we do have a second on that.
Is there additional conversation? Mr. Treasurer?
Mrs. Dorsh?
No.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
No. Motion carries. Moving on, item seven dot three. To enable the treasurer to carry
That was
Oh, correct. Motion carries to amend.
Now we have to
Thank you very much.
Fair enough, yes.
So now, and then for that, do I need to read into record then everything that is here again with the amendment of?
I don't know as though you need to read all of those, but I, we, the amendment is to where there are calendar year two thousand twenty-two that it would be replaced with the standing authorities would be for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, I believe.
Okay, so that, that takes care of calling this into record.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Then with that, Mr. Treasurer?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
And Mr. Fuji?
Yes. amended motion passes. Item seven dot three, to enable the treasurer to carry out necessary duties involving operations. It's recommended the Board of Education grant the following standing authorization for calendar year two thousand twenty-two. Advances on tax settlements. The treasurer is hereby authorized to secure advanced payments from the county auditor when funds from property taxes are available and payable to the district. Investment of interim and inactive funds. The treasurer is hereby authorized to invest interim and inactive funds in permissible investments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code and Board Policy sixty-one forty-four. Investments. Appropriation modifications. The treasurer is hereby authorized to make appropriation modifications between fund accounts with these modifications being reported to the Board of Education for approval. Blanket purchase orders. The treasurer is hereby authorized to issue blanket purchase orders when necessary with a limit of up to fifty thousand dollars. Payments of bills and payrolls. The treasurer is authorized to pay all bills and payrolls within the limit of appropriation resolutions as bills are received and when the merchandise has been certified as received in good condition by the superintendent or his or her designate. Advancement of funds. The treasurer is authorized to advance monies from the general fund to other funds in anticipation of future receipts. When the anticipated money is received, the advance will be returned to the general fund. Establishing bank accounts. The treasurer is hereby authorized to establish the banking accounts deemed necessary to properly account for district funds, providing the said accounts are within the limits established in the depository contracts with the banking institutions. Authorized signature on checks. The treasurer is hereby authorized to sign all checks drawn on bank accounts of the school district as provided for in section thirty-three thirteen dot five-one of Ohio Revised Code. Authorized public records training. The treasurer is hereby authorized to represent the Board of Education as their designate for required public records training to be completed once per term of office as established by Ohio Revised Code. Authorization of employee dishonesty insurance. In lieu of surety bonding, the treasurer is hereby authorized to purchase insurance coverage when the current policy expires for the local board president, treasurer, and superintendent in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Appointment of tax incentive review council representative. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Jeremy J. Buskirk, treasurer CFO, as district representative of the Delaware County Tax Incentive Review Council. Is there a motion?
Tell me.
Is there a second? I'll second. There's a second by Mr. Crowe. Motion by Mrs. Dorsh. Is there conversation? Please.
I am um wanting to know an example of the blanket purchase orders when necessary with a limit up to fifty thousand dollars. What would be an example of one of those expenditures?
So we generally do not use blanket purchase orders. Uh, however, our policy does say that we have to put a limit on that. Um, the situations where we do use something that I would say is probably a blanket purchase order is something that we have as a multi-vendor. Our practice, I've actually set that much, much, much lower at more like a five hundred dollar limit. And what these multi-vendors are for generally is more for clubs where they could be having, you know, small amount of purchases, but numerous different vendors. Um, so that's a, that's a situation where a, a blanket purchase order is being used. But in general, we, we, we don't use blanket purchase orders, and it's a vendor for an amount um with a quote or something behind it.
Thank you. The second question we have is in reading of section thirty-three thirteen uh point fifty-one of the ORC, it says that if the treasurer is incapacitated in such manner that he's unable to sign such checks, the board may appoint an officer of the school district. Do we have someone already appointed?
So most, most checks are, uh, with me being the signer, are um kind of an electronic process.
Auto-generated.
Yeah. Um, in general, though, on bank accounts, I do have um my assistant treasurer as a signer in the event that something happened. So for, for things that would need to continue, if anything were ever to happen, I, I
I'm hoping nothing happens to you, but
Correct.
In reading that, I was interested to know
Yeah, we, we try to make sure that there are those contingencies in place, and it's kind of morbid to say, but I, it's the, if I were ever to get hit by a bus rule, I want to make sure that, you know, things are still in place.
And that wouldn't be a school bus. That would be like a Cota bus or a different type of bus.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, discussion?
I would make uh a motion to modify bullet point number nine on the authorized public records training. To modify that to say the treasurer is hereby temporarily authorized for the next thirty days to represent the board, et cetera, et cetera. It's my hope that everybody, including me, because I need to take it again, in that thirty-day period, take the open meeting training.
So under item nine, you're specifically referring, so there's a motion to amend authorized public train, records training. There isn't actually a uh, a timestamp on this.
That's what I'm saying, putting a thirty-day timestamp on it.
And would we be, no, I'm sorry, there's a motion to amend, discussion happens after.
Right.
Is there a second? There's a second to amend the authorized public records training. Is there discussion?
So basically, you're indicating that each of us should take that training, which we, I think we talked about it last
Right.
And is this you, is this a requirement to do this? Is there a timeframe, like each year or?
And, and if I can just, if I can just chime in here on this as well, I believe the term of office is considered a four-year period. Um, so you, you actually did take this. Um, I have your certificate, I think, last year or two years ago. So you actually, for your term of office, would not need to do it.
Correct.
Um, and I think, so Mr. Crowe, having a new term of office, he would need to do it for the four-year period um as well as uh Graziosi and Mrs. Nix would have to do it for this four-year period of, of term of office. So um, and I think, Mr. Fuji, if you have not done it, technically, your term of office, I have already done it underneath your term of office. So if you were re-elected again, probably you would need to
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Buskirk for outing me. I appreciate that.
I said if
But yes, I, I understand what you're saying. And it, and it's covered right now because my term of office started. So the conversation right now would be the intent to modify this so that it only lasted for the next thirty days, in which case it would not be necessary if every board member were uh public records trained from the auditor's website. Uh, is it the auditor's website? I forget.
Uh, it was Attorney General.
Attorney General, thank you very much.
Do we, now I have mine too. Do we need to change this, though, for everyone to do it? I mean, we can also all do it. I mean, we wouldn't have
It's been voluntary.
Okay, so you're
The, the law says that you do it for each term that you're elected, any elected official. In, in past years, I brought up that everybody should take it. I found it very informative the first time I took it. And it covers items that you need to know as an elected official. It has a carve-out in it to where we can appoint him and not have to do it. That doesn't make the board member any, or the elected official, any more knowledgeable.
No, I get it. And you're wanting to maintain the term of office, not
Well, the tur, term of office is statute.
All the modification does is takes away him as the backup after thirty days in an attempt that we all, and me included, take the refresher and become aware of what's required as elected officials.
So there is a, and I'm going to get this correct from the last time. So there is a motion, and there is a second to amend what is the ninth bullet item under authorized public records training. Is there further discussion? Mr. Treasurer? On the amendment?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
No. Amendment passes. So further discussion on all of the remaining uh areas under this motion? Hearing none, Mr. Treasurer?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven dot four. It is recommended the board authorize the law firm of Bricker and Eckler to represent the Board of Education of Big Walnut Local School District before the Delaware County Board of Revision. With respect to all matters of Big Walnut, Board of Education may commence. Correction, let me back up. With respect to all matters, which the Big Walnut Board of Education may commence or be a party to during the two thousand twenty-two calendar year. It is recommended the board authorize the law firm of McGowan Markling Attorneys at Law to provide five hours of pro bono legal services for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year through the school law hotline if notified by law firm. Is there a motion?
Tell me.
Is there a second? I'll second. There's a second. Discussion.
Have any other law firms been uh contacted to get some insight to competitive rates? Or is this, I mean, it seems like this is somebody that they've had for a long time and
We have not. There's um, to my knowledge, there's a handful of law firms that do um the board of revisions items, and uh we've had a, a good relationship with Bricker. Uh, but no, we have not looked at different rates.
Historically, how long has Bricker been the uh law firm on record for the board?
It's not. That's the question here. It is of, it has always been uh passed this way, but it's limited to the Board of Revisions.
Board of Revisions, correct.
I'm sorry, Board of Revisions, thank you.
However, do we not use them for everything?
We do use them for generally everything.
So again, how long has that relationship been intact?
I can speak to at least four and a half years that I've been here, so.
And I apologize for the interruption.
Oh, no, sir, no, no problem, no apologies. Mid nineties? Thank you. Other discussion?
I have a suggestion or a question. Um, the, the second paragraph talks about the board for the law, using the law firm through this legal services through the two thousand twenty-one school year. I'd like to kind of make a recommendation that we, using Bricker and Eckler, that we either keep that the same for the two thousand twenty-two school year or to the fiscal um two thousand twenty-one year.
Oh, can I, can I speak to that just for a second? The reason that the uh, the Bricker one is probably for the Board of Revisions for the calendar years because um our taxes are calculated on a calendar year. So I, we're welcome to change, however, but I think that that one, my opinion would be is that one does make sense to stay calendar year just because that's how our county looks at tax collections and cycles for Board of Revisions and things like that. But that's, that's just my opinion.
So, Member Graziosi, if you were trying to make an amendment to that, are you now withdrawing that amendment? Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion to be had? Mr. Treasurer?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
No.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes. Appointments, uh, number eight, appointments. Eight dot one. It's recommended the Board of Education make the following appointments for two thousand twenty-two. Uh, you'll see them listed for us. This is generally where I think, uh, Madam Superintendent, you give us some guidance, but they are legislative liaison OSBA, alternative legislative liaison OSBA, student achievement liaison OSBA, Big Walnut Education Foundation Liaison, and Sunbury Big Walnut Joint Ventures Agreement Committee. Madam Superintendent, can you speak to this? I suppose, see, again, this is the fourth time now. I'm going to reference Pro Tem. Thank you for that guidance. Uh, is there a motion?
Tell me.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Thank you. Discussion, Madam Superintendent.
Um, the first few, as you can see, are affiliated with the House School Board Association. So those are positions that typically exist in all districts that they're able to kind of be the, the point person on watching the legislation and then hopefully reporting back to the rest of your team. And then the um student achievement person is just what it sounds like. They're kind of watching more of the academic things that are coming out of OSBA. The Education Foundation, as I'm sure many of you are aware, is a great community group that provides scholarships for students. So that would be um a board member that works with that group. And then the last one, Jeremy can probably speak to a little bit better, but this is uh our GRE area uh that we work, we own part of the land, and then we kind of uh work together to, to use the park and kind of provide this park, pavilion, uh baseball field area for the community.
And these are standing appointments that last through the calendar year. So that spans the two school years. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. President Pro Tem, I would move to table this until after we discuss item ten. I believe that's, it should have been placed below that.
There is a motion to table. Now I'm going back to my Roberts rule sheet. Thank you. And a motion to table requires, does not require a second?
Uh, I think a table does still.
Yes. To take up a tabled item, move to table does require a second. Is there a second to table this item of the agenda to later? There's a second to table. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Treasurer?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix? Mrs. Dorsh? Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. or Mr. Fuji?
Understood, yes. Motion is tabled. Item nine, administrative advisory and board committees. Item nine dot one, it's recommended the Board of Education member, bu, it, item nine dot one, it is recommended the board, Big Walnut Board of Education members volunteer for the following through two thousand twenty-two. Current standing administrative advisory committees, academic advisory, economic development committee, finance committee, insurance committee, Sunbury Meadows Community Author, Authority Representative, records commission, safety committee, current standing board committee, facilities planning committee, city villages and townships, council and zoning, city of Sunbury, Berkshire Township, Genoa Township, Harlem Township, Kingston Township, Porter Township, Trenton Township, Village of Galena. Is there a motion?
Tell me.
Is there a second? There's a second by Mr. Crowe, thank you. Conversation, discussion, Madam Superintendent's.
These are just our typical committees that board members are involved with. Um, when it comes to the last section there, um, in the past, we've just had a, a board member that kind of volunteers to, again, kind of paying attention to that particular political subdivision. Um, sometimes it's people that live in that area that already kind of have a connection, if not, um, just an interest. But with now a city, a village, and parts of six townships, we have a lot of moving parts. So it's kind of helpful for somebody to kind of be a liaison. And then, Jeremy, do you want to talk about the Sunbury Meadows Community Authority?
Yeah, so the Sunbury Meadows Community Development Authority is for our Sunday, Sunbury Meadows developments. And this is the one that has a four mil additional charge. We, and it, and that's, we meet once a year. I'm actually, um, since I live in the Sunbury Meadows, I'm actually a trustee now. Um, it's a once-a-year item.
And I would point out on uh the top section with the administrative, we can have up to two board members on each of those without it being a board meeting. Um, the board committee with the facilities, um, which we've definitely slowed those down. We did a, a tour this year. Um, we typically meet at least once a year and look at the capital projects. But that uh committee has been more active when we were in the process of, um, for example, when we were on the ballot to pass the bond for the two new buildings. And then, um, they were very, very helpful in helping us hire the architect, contractors. Remember, some committee sat in on those interviews. So they're not quite as active right now, but because that is a board committee that reports to the board versus to Jeremy or me, um, you can, we have to advertise at the board meeting, and so you can have as many board members there as you'd like. um, you can, we have to advertise at the board meeting, and so you can have as many board members there as you'd like, but typically we have at least one or two people that are kind of the point people out of the Board.
I do have a question, Jeremy. Who do you meet with at the Sunberry Meadows, Meadows Community Authority? Who is that authority?
So the, and this would, basically, this would, unless they lived in those developments, this would be an individual that would just attend the meeting to be able to know what's going on with those, um...
And it's a community meeting, though, I think is the question.
So, so Sunberry Meadows Community Development Authority is a government entity of its own. Um, so it has, and, and the annual meeting there is the, the board meeting for that organization. So it is, um, I can't recall all the individuals that are part of it at this very moment in time, but I can, I can get you that if you'd like. Um, but it would be residents of, and, and when we talk about the Sunberry Meadows, it's both on the west side and the east side of Route Three, those communities, um, that it's, I think there's nine individuals on that board as a whole. Um, and two of them are still developer, um, individuals.
That when the money's approved from a village that's donated to the district?
Yeah.
So the developers are involved?
The developers at this point in time are, once those communities are completely, um, done and, and all built out, then it, they would not be involved anymore, it becomes a completely, um, community-driven organization at that point in time.
Thank you.
And is there an ETA on, on that build out? I, you had referenced it once.
Um, I believe the development on the east side, so it's the communities, now there's a portion of it.
That backs up to...
But that's part of a different, um, I think it's called the communities that Sunberry is the one on the east side. I, I believe they're in their final phase, so I would expect that one to be within the next year or two, depending on how development goes. Uh, I do believe, though, that also Sunberry has, um, has rolled in, um, additionally to this, the, um, Rolling Hills development, which is occurring, um, off Golf Course Road. I, I think that's their intention is to roll that into this, uh, current, so it would be ongoing, yeah.
Thank you.
And, and, um, that village collection is for a twenty-year period at the point that a, uh, um, a permit is, um, received for that. Um, so it would be twenty years after the final build as well, that organization would continue to go on.
Thank you.
So for a while.
Quick question. If the Rolling Hills becomes part of that, does it have the four mil?
Yep.
Other discussion, this is normally when names get attached to something, correct, Madam Superintendent?
Um, we have not met within the last couple years, um, the... Covid, um, the, the chamber has kind of picked up portions of, of trying to do that now. But in general, it's once or twice a year when, when we were meeting regularly.
Um, as, you know, the moment activity happens, then it all probably...
Sure.
Um, I mean, I think historically people have just kind of jumped in and moved and given names. Um, I will say that I have been on the finance committee for, um, both years so far of my term and, and previous to that, I was also on the finance committee. While I'm not opposed to staying on that, I think it would be a great opportunity for someone else to get kind of a view into the deep dive on the finance committee. Um, so I wanted to throw my name, um, into the hat for academic advisory and economic development.
Other advocacy's?
I, I do have a question, Mrs. Dorsh or the, oh. Before I don't throw my name into the hat for some of these, how often, um, you speak to how often do they, uh... How, how much, how many do you, once a week, once a month?
Oh, no.
Every other one?
Typically, the finance committee, Jeremy runs that, that's quarterly. Academic advisory is three to four times a year typically, uh, there have been times if we're working on a certain project where, um, we may have, you know, two meetings back to back in a month, but typically it's been spread out throughout the year. Um, insurance committee, I'll let you answer.
Insurance committee is approximately quarterly.
I would say that's the most any of these would meet, would be quarterly.
The, the records commission, um, we have a meeting once, once a year, uh, that's to... It, and it's usually the president, uh, to approve our disposals for the year is, and, um, periodically, we, if there are new updates to the recommended, um, uh, records retention schedule, uh, through the, uh, Ohio, Historical Society, I believe that's what it's through, then we'll, we'll update those as part of, uh, the records commission meeting, but that's usually just a once a year meeting.
The most time, say, a, a few are annual, the rest are pretty much quarterly.
I'd like to throw my hat in for academic and safety committee.
I would like to, yeah, for the safety committee, the finance committee.
Doug, you thinking the records is the president?
Mm-hmm.
Sherry, would you like to stay on the finance committee? Would you, would you stay, like, maybe for the, like, the next meeting, it would be a great job for, uh, as a carryover, you know, or do you think that's necessary? I don't know that it's necessary, I mean, it's, Jeremy kind of heads up the committee and, and I think before, when I was getting, first getting involved in it, I kind of sat down with Jeremy and talked, which is, um, yeah, I don't, I don't think that there's any, she kind of...
Sure.
I think it just, it's really nice insight to the process that goes into the budget forecast and, um, I don't know.
And often that winds up being the vetting place for some of your assumptions for the forecast, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Others, Ms. Nix, any others? So currently I have, uh, Mrs. Dorsh and Mrs. Nix under the academic committee, uh, economic development committee.
And Mrs. Dorsh?
I'll do as well. Finance committee right now seems to be Mrs. Graziosi.
I'll add the exciting insurance committee.
And I'll join the insurance committee with you, Mrs. Graziosi. Mr. Crowell, President Crowell has, uh, on the records commission, we have the opening at Sunberry Meadows Community Authority Representative and we have, oh, and then on safety is, uh, Mrs. Nix and Mrs. Graziosi. So the question is about Sunberry Meadows Community Authority representative, representative.
And you can't have one more on each of them.
I was not. I think, I think our former president was.
Oh, great.
That sounds like fun to me. I'll take the Sunberry Meadows Community.
Thank you, we have the current standing and again, Madam Superintendent, it's my understanding, all five of us can serve on that, so there's not really need for, for their discussion there. Then we talk about the, uh, liaison. Do we? Apologies.
I think in the past, well, I think it was two and then everyone was invited, so we could all...
Oh, that's right. You're right, thank you.
Facilities. As the point person.
Thank you.
And invite the rest of you anytime you want to come.
Then city villages and townships, this has generally been where folks have lived or have existing relationships. Uh, that may or may not work out quite as well right now, so how do we want to handle that?
I'll take Berkshire.
I'll take Sunberry.
Steve, I'd ask you, did you, kidding, did you know?
So interestingly, though, I, I did and, uh, have been to their meetings except for when, uh, Covid occurred, so it was like, the first meeting was like in February of two thousand twenty, uh, that I attended there, and I'm not, honestly, I have not attended one since, so, uh, I don't remember why. I don't know if I stopped getting when those dates were or stopped attending because of other reasons. But hap, am, am happy to honestly for Genoa, not sure that we'll get all of these covered that way.
Well, if you want to team up, we can...
Do you have, do you have a recommendation here?
Well, I think the big thing is when there's development going on in those, and some of these are more active than others, and it's helpful to have somebody that's able to have a relationship with, but for example, Galena, Sunberry, for sure, Genoa, I would say are the ones that probably have some development going on. Those would probably be good ones to focus on, and then the other ones, there might be somebody if something comes up, like there's not a lot going on in Compton, for example, but you can have somebody that's just kind of, if something does happen.
And does that, do those need to be named now?
Typically, we do, but...
I'll take it.
Certainly, you can change it later, it's not too big.
Right.
I do know Berkshire meets on Thursday night.
I'll take Kingston and Porter.
Mr. Fuji, would you want to help out or I can be going?
Sure, that would work.
What is, how's doing stuff? City of Sunberry?
In Sunberry, as I was saying.
Mr. Crowell had said Sunberry.
Well, there can be two of us, that way if one can't make it, the other can.
Um, and you said Kingston and Porter?
Yeah.
Um, Trenton and Harlem, we're allowed.
Oh, wait, you're, you're in Kingston, aren't you?
Yeah.
If, if you'd like that, that's, I just didn't...
It doesn't really matter, I'll keep whatever's, I mean, I have some relationships and a few different ones, so I can look for different ones, but of course, I don't, it's not really, um, I was just trying to see what was not covered yet.
Looks to me like Harlem and Trenton. And I had Trenton last time, it's a bit much, but I'll go ahead and take that.
I'll take Harlem.
I would, um, go on this, like, a backup for this Sunberry, we're joining with that.
Oh, Sherry?
Yeah, I'm, um...
Sherry's on Sunberry.
Yeah. So Jeremy, just for the, the record in this moment, you don't have to go back up to the current standing advisor, or administrative advisory committees, but look at the city villages and townships as you're taking notes, can you read off what you have?
I have Mrs. Dorsh for Sunberry, Mrs. Nix for Berkshire, uh, Mr. Fuji for Genoa and Harlem, uh, Mr. Crowell for Kingston, Porter and Trenton, and, uh, Mrs. Graziosi for Galena.
And that was also Sunberry.
All right. Any other discussion in this area? Mr. Treasurer?
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes, motion carries. Item ten, memberships, it's recommended the Board approve the following memberships for the two thousand twenty-two calendar year. OSBA at a sum of eight thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars, OSBA Legal Assistance Fund at two hundred and fifty dollars, Big Walnut Area Chamber of Commerce at one hundred seventy-five dollars, purchasing cooperatives with Meta Solutions purchasing cooperative part of core services cost, ENI, uh, cooperative services reaffirming continuing membership, excuse me, and other... And other purchasing cooperatives and agreements as prescribed by O R C nine dot four eight and one hundred twenty-five dot zero four as appropriate, is there a motion?
Some.
Is there a second? I'll second. There's a second by Mr. Crowell, is there a discussion?
I am curious to know, for eight thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars, how many memberships that covers? How does that work, how is that calculated?
It's a district level membership, um, some of the main benefits, we call them, like, our administrative assistant calls quite a bit, like, what they've done to items and, um, how to interpret different things with, uh, O R C or what we're allowed to do, things with motions. Um, so they're kind of in advisory capacity and then we get different, um, publications and information that comes out to us, um, that you'll get as well as a board member, um, so keeping us updated on what's going on legislatively is a big one, uh, because that's constantly changing. Uh, and then just other things that are going on in the state of education.
So this, eight thousand, excuse me, eight thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars covers automatic memberships for all the Board?
It's a district level membership, so it's not for, like, an individual, but then you would all be listed and then, so like, usually Jeremy and I receive all of their publications and all the board members.
So if I don't want to be a member, how do I get my meaning?
We'd have to ask, right?
I, I just feel like that's a lot of, lot of money that could be going to kids and teachers that I don't need the OSBA, especially they are history with the NSBA and, uh, all of what happened with that, calling parents domestic terrorists, and there are other organizations that I feel more comfortable being part of. I think they actually would not have a, um...
This, this avowed themselves of NSBA, I think.
Right.
Other conversation?
And you're saying yourself personally?
Do not want to be listed, OSBA.
Okay.
Let's see if the motion passes first. Other conversation?
On the, uh, can we find out from the OSBA if they have severed ties with the NSBA? That was an action that I found completely repulsive.
I believe the last, it was in a publication that they did and it was made very public, but I, if you would like, we can, uh, make sure.
Yeah, this is the first article, it comes up, Ohio School Boards Association ends affiliation with National School Board Association, there's like five or six of them.
Well, I, I heard yesterday in a report that they had distanced themselves, that's, there's a difference between severing ties and disting.
Well, if they're no longer a member.
Co, correct, I believe they did not pay their membership.
Article dated October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, Ohio School Board Association leaves National School Board Association Group.
It said, we've been directed by the Ohio School Boards Association, Board of Trustees to inform you that OSBA will not continue its membership in the National School Board Association. OSBA's decision to terminate membership, blah, 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 it's, um, I can send this link to you all.
Other conversation?
Uh, the only other question I had, uh, the Meta Solutions, which falls under this, didn't we have an issue with, uh, something we had to pass because they hadn't paid up their membership with something?
So even, even the, um, cooperative that you're mentioning is, it's not a paid thing even through them, it is, and...
Access.
It's, it's more of a making sure you have the right papers on file and I think when we were talking with Mr., uh, Mr. Schwartz, um, and, and can't remember, it's the one that train was, um, we were getting that one through in December. Um, I think it came down to a difference in opinion between lawyers, Meta, and, and I think as a business practice, Mr. Crowell, sometimes there can be differing opinions and I think that Meta is, um, planning to rectify that, so I, I think they are a worthy, uh, group to continue with and we do, um, get more than just that through the purchasing cooperative, a lot of our food service, um, per, purchasing, uh, of commodities and things like that go through there, so it's not, it's not just that one contract, that's just the one that, um, they did, they didn't have part of that cooperative named as Meta Solutions, I think they had it stolen, they were still on file as, um, Metropolitan Educational Council, which was the...
A naming issue.
The name, the name that they were prior to, um, merging with other organizations.
That was a clerical issue.
I, that's my understanding, yes.
I didn't understand it that way.
Any other discussion? Mr. Treasurer?
Uh, Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
No.
Mrs. Nix?
No.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes. Takes us to item eleven. It is recommended the Board adjourn this meeting.
We have a tabled item?
We only have to go to the attachments if somebody says, I move to take something off the table.
I meant to take, uh, eight point one off the table. I meant to take, uh, eight point one off the table.
We have a motion to revisit item, a tabled item currently agenda item eight dot one. Is there a second? Requires a second to take it off the table as well, right, Mr. Treasurer? I believe so also. Is there a second? There's a second from Mrs. Graziosi. Conversation. I guess I'm wondering is the reason that we tabled it in, uh, relationship to the fact that we now have OSBA as a, uh.
I, the reason that I proposed the tabling was that I found it out of order.
In terms of becoming a member of OSBA and then having a legislative liaison.
Right, because that was a very slim yes by me. Very slim.
Okay. Noted slim, yes. Continuing on then, uh, Legislative Liaison, Alternative Legis- Legislative Liaison, Student Achievement Liaison, Big Walnut Education Foundation Liaison and Sunbury Big Walnut Joint Ventures Agreements Committee Representative from the Board. This again almost becomes a, uh, is it self not or just kind of where you'd like to serve?
I'll take the Ventures Agreement Committee.
That makes sense with the tie to Sunbury. Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Thank you, Mrs. Dorsh. Do we have two on there? Weekend? Sure. Sounds great. Thank you, Mrs. Graziosi. Take the Legislative Liaison if nobody has any, uh, and then Mrs. Dorsh with the alternative? Is three acceptable?
We already have two with, um, Sunbury Big Walnut Joint Venture of Mr. Crowe and Mrs. Graziosi, I believe.
I'll, I have been that for the last two years. I'd be happy and proud to do that again.
I'll be your alternative Legislative Liaison.
So recognize that's with OSBA though.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to be a member, so that disqualifies me.
I, I don't know if it disqualif, in, in all honesty, I don't know that it disqualifies you or not, if you don't want to be listed with them, but as a district, we just approved to be a member of OSBA, so.
You don't want to receive their publications. That's where a lot of the.
Right. Okay, understood. Thank you. I just wanted to, okay. Great. So I think we have the five covered. If I understand it correctly, Legislative Liaison Steve, Alternate Sherry, Student Achievement Steve, Big Walnut Ed Foundation Sherry, I'm sorry, Mrs. Dorsh, uh, Sunbury Big Walnut Joint Ventures Agreement Committee, Mr. Crowe and Mrs. Graziosi. Do I have that correct, Mr. Treasurer?
That's what I, that's what I had.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Treasurer?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Upstate.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Fuji?
Yes. Moving on, item dot eleven. It is recommended the board adjourn this meeting. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Dorsh, Mrs. Nix, thank you. Mr. Treasurer.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes. The organizational meeting of Big Walnut Local Schools is officially adjourned. Stay tuned for the board meeting, uh, following. I understand a photo opportunity and a recess before that meeting starts. Is that correct? Thank you.
Almost there. Okay.
Good morning. It is the mission of the Big Walnut Local Schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. In order to reali- realize our mission, we will strive to achieve and maintain our vision of student-focused professional collaborative staff, student-focused challenging in current curriculum, supportive, involved and informed community, safe, respectful and welcoming environment. Uh, I'll start the meeting by seeing the Pledge of Allegiance. We can all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Jeremy?
Mr. Crowe?
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Here.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Here.
Mrs. Nix? Mr. Fuji?
Here. District goals. To improve academic achievement, promote whole child development, optimize capital and humane, human resources, demonstrate financial responsibility. And Angie, your report?
Thank you. Um, I do not have anything on my report this morning, but I do for number seven. If you want me to go on and cut.
Yes.
Well, ironically, since we just had the conversation around OSBA, it is, um, OSBA's School Board Recognition Month. And so I do have certificates for you to, um, recognize obviously with Sherry, Steve, the work you've done over the last year, um, Doug, the work you've done and are going to do, and then for our two new board members, um, as you're getting started. So, um, always hits at the beginning of the year, so I'm going to go ahead and recognize you for that and, um, thank you for your hours of service to the district.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Amber. Look at shaking hands. There we go. Showing up the president.
All right. Once again, thank you for your service and that is all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Um, the only thing I was going to note is we did receive our first payment underneath this new, uh, school funding model. Um, I've been kind of talking about that. It is still, I'll call it a work in progress. There's some kind of odd things that are still working through. They've been, as they've shared with us, they've moved from, um, tracking, reporting on one line. Now they're doing it on about a dozen lines. So, um, it was a, a big lift for them to, to program it and everything. Uh, it has started. And, um, I, I think there's still, there are still some pieces, um, I believe transportation is still being, which is a, a component of the formula, is still being done underneath the old formula, so they have to update that. There are portions that are still, uh, being funded through older data, um, that they have to update and that's, that's supposed to be taking place over the next couple of months. Um, so, uh, but it's nice that finally we, uh, what was passed in July and they've been working on, we've, we've begun to, uh, um, get paid underneath that formula. Um, so that's really all I have.
Did our per pupil amount go up or down?
So what I see in the formula is that our per pupil base cost is, I believe it's seven thousand three hundred. Um, but our local share is somewhere in the six thousand some range. So you, they basically are saying, here's what the amount on a very, very base of student should be, but we believe that you should be funding X amount. So, um, I don't have those numbers written.
No, that's, that's fine. I can.
Provide those at some point.
Is that, is that a plus or a minus to comparable to last year?
Probably about where we were at last year.
Uh, takes us to number nine. Board members' items of interest. Sherry? Sherry has nothing? Sherry has nothing. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm getting used to saying that now. Really, Ms. Hamburg, this is to you. I continue to wish to express appreciation as I have done, I think routinely every meeting we've had. But we look around and we see 12 Columbus Public Schools closed today, up from nine. We see around our state and around our region, some opportunities where districts have been struggling. I appreciate that the most we've done is adjust some schedules for early dismissal or early or late start to accommodate what our driver shortage is. I wish to continue to express my appreciation for our staff or our in-person model. I, I keep thinking that we're going to come to a time where we're going to stop mentioning that because that's going to resume as the norm. And yet I see around us, it's not, and yet for us it is. So I think it's important to continue to express that appreciation.
I could just add to that. One of the challenges is we still have some open positions that we're not able to fill. So then when people are out sick, it's just compounded. And I do want to thank our staff members who again are having to fill in for their teachers when they're out. They're not getting their planning time, which is really challenging when they're trying to adjust their lessons based on how the kids are doing. That's extra time for them outside of the workday. All of our staff members, our custodians and our working doubles, our bus drivers that are picking up extra trips. A lot of our administrative team has been subbing in classrooms. I taught second grade the other day.
I heard. And can you say what the second graders wanted to call you?
Mrs. Hamburger. Yeah.
Should, should we thank Mr. Maz? Should we thank Mr. Mazzy for that as he directed that to you last in December?
My auto call script, but anyway. But you know, the administrative team, I know Annie as the principal of the ELC, she hops in all the time. The early learning center is especially challenging because we have to have certain ratios in there with our aides. So I know Mark and Russ and I have filled in there as well as aides. And so everybody's just kind of jumping in and doing things we don't normally do across the board, all the staff. But I just wanted to note that, not for continued thanks, but just so people understand that if we get to a point where we can't open a day, we've exhausted, you know, those options. So we are trying to make sure that we can keep doors open for the kids that are well and able to come.
Well, and I think that's a delicate balance, which was my, going to be my next point of let's be honest about the obstacles and trials and tribulations currently facing all staff. Again, as you noted, from cooks and custodians and secretaries all the way through the teaching and administrative ranks. But at the same time, balance that with the celebration of what we've been able to do as a district, not just today, yesterday, last week, but for the last time period of this, this pandemic when we have been able to. So I continue to express my appreciation. I have every chance I've had in this seat and will continue to do so. And in spite of those challenges, the other item of interest that I have that I'd like to talk about is the academic advisory committee that met yesterday under the facilitation of Mrs. Clark and Mrs. Toma. Even in spite of maybe subbing in classes and things like that, I would just say to my fellow board members that we still have the opportunity to look at and review seventh and eighth grade health curriculum. I think that topic is really important and I'm sure that as those items come to us as a committee, we'll need to take a deep dive into those curricular matters. And would say that Ms. Clark and Ms. Toma did a fantastic job in walking us through what those standards are from the state and what the expectations are here at Big Walnut. So those are my items, Mr. President.
Thank you. Steve, Alice?
Well, I echo what Steve said. I know what it's like to juggle in different arenas. And being the bus driver, the cafeteria worker, the classroom teacher, the gym are all, it requires a lot of creativity in my mind. And thank you for what you do. And especially staff and our bus drivers. You know, I have, I didn't pass them. They met on the road coming to the meeting this morning. And I just, I really cannot give enough accolades to our bus drivers because they have the whole class by themselves with their back to them. And I just feel like that is one of our group of employees that we really need to support and help in any way we can. This is exciting for me and I'm looking forward to the experience as a new board member. And have an open door policy, always have. If anybody needs to communicate, I have Alice Nix at Big Walnut, local school district.
BWLS.
There you go. Chief Ms. Hamburger. Anyway, I'm very honored and humbled to be here and I hope my experience has benefited you.
I would also like to echo what Mr. Fuji and his sister said. And I am very proud of our family from out of state calling and saying, wow, you're in school. And it is a very big undertaking. And I'm honored to support and as an elected official. And I want to know, I want you to know, you have the community behind you and keeping this school open, the parents behind you. And the parents, I think we need to look at being creative with what our community can do to keep the schools on, keep them running. So I'd like to, as I'm white, we can look at that with, you know, more volunteers in the school. I'd like to see more parents in the school to help support. My friends have been past years assisted in the school and absolutely love the parents and mothers. You have my support and also Angela Graziosi.
And for my items of interest, I will just say that everybody needs to bear with me. This is a position that I've never had to participate in. Then again, the last four years was a position I had never had to participate in prior. I will make mistakes, but hopefully not too many. And that's really all I had. Moving on to item 11.
10. Poet participation.
Oh, sorry. Tried to eliminate the public. Shame on me. Did anybody file for public conversation?
We do have two individuals. Do, would you like to go through the requirements?
Yes, you're allowed three minutes to speak. I would point out, and I can't remember whether the previous president did, you can't, or you shouldn't, or it's not allowed. Don't direct your comments to any individual board member or administration. Public participation is basically for you to just open up and let us know what the public's concerns are. You have three minutes to talk. I don't have a stopwatch, so.
I can help, I can help.
Oh, okay. At two minutes and a half, I'll raise my hand and wave at you. And please try to keep it to three minutes, even if there's only two people talking here.
So our first individual is Lad Gilgard, 3923 Shake Bark Trail, Galena. And regarding getting the kids back to normal as soon as possible.
Wanted to echo Mr. Fuji's comments. The madness is still going on all around us. And I implore our school district to continue to lead in getting the world back to normal. Last night it was in Upper Arlington at a school and some businesses and the panic is still going strong there. It's a little, little crazy. I'd like to read a few quotes regarding COVID-19. This one from none other than the New York Times. "We are coming up on two years of disrupted school. For those in the second grade, a life of closed schools, learning behind plexiglass and masks, learning to read without seeing their teachers' mouths and no physical contact on the playground is all they've ever known. This is outrageous, dangerous and fear-based. The Omicron surge may make certain districts want to cling to these measures, but they shouldn't. The measures the Times refers to here includes masks on children. These measures have harmed the emotional well-being and education of millions of students and it will take a generation to unravel all the damage that they've done. CNN medical analyst Dr. Leanna Nguyen says cloth masks are little more than facial decorations. There's no place for them in the light of Omicron. Former FDA Commissioner Scott Goutlieb says cloth masks aren't going to provide a lot of protection. That's the bottom line. This is an airborne illness. We now understand that and a cloth mask is not going to protect you from a virus that spreads through airborne transmission. This is news coming from these people as they're finally coming around to the truth and the facts. Doctors, scientists and people paying attention have known this all along. We knew we were being lied to and misled. The virus response has been more damaging than the virus itself. But this pandemic narrative is beginning to unravel. Now we know cloth masks don't work, schools shouldn't close, vaccines don't prevent transmission, the data's all wrong. Now we know. The CEO of Pfizer said this week that their vaccine is ineffective against Omicron, that they should have another one by March. We're at two shots plus a booster and apparently we need another vaccine for this mild variant and then more boosters after they wear out. Not sure how that makes sense. We still don't know how many people are dying in the hospital because of COVID or just with COVID. If you don't believe me, here's what His Holiness, Dr. Fauci says. If you look at children who are hospitalized, many of them are hospitalized with COVID as opposed to because of COVID. If a child goes into the hospital, they're automatically get tested for COVID and get counted as a COVID hospitalized individual when in fact they may be in there for a broken leg. Someone claimed in here a few months ago, there were 6,000 kids in Florida's ICUs from COVID, which was recklessly false. The CDC estimates 40% of hospitals with COVID are there for another reason. There's no reason we shouldn't go back to complete normal as a school district. Take the masks off kids on buses and bus drivers, which was never necessary to begin with. Stop panicking the kids and stop testing anyone or anything on short legs, on two legs. Omicron is a cold or less for children. It's time to stop shortchanging the kids on their youth experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next person is Renee Bream of 37 Letts Avenue in Sunbury regarding mental health, goodness, joy and discipline.
And welcome new school board members. In the spirit of focusing on education and as a follow-up to exposing one of your mental health counseling organizations, I would like to encourage this board to look deeper into Centero Counseling Services and consider requesting your provider, the Delaware Morrow Mental Health and Recovery Services Board to offer an alternative provider for our children. As I have mentioned in the past board meetings, Centero is not good for our children. With all these mental health and behavioral health concerns, I would like, I would encourage the board to consider the root of some of these issues and what you as a board can do to alleviate at least during the school day, some of the distractions and issues. With that, I encourage you to look into just three things, three of many things. But one, I would like for you to look at the books our teachers are using in coursework. I would look for you to look, I'd like for you to look into the books in the library and classrooms as supplemental leisure reading. Two, I'd like for you to look at the cell phone policy. I'd love to see the kids interacting with each other more, especially when they're outside of the classroom. Not to mention, I can't even imagine being a teacher with the distractions. Right now I believe that there are some teachers that have certain policies on cell phones and some teachers that are more lax with it. I don't think it should be up to the teachers. I really think that the board could make a decision on that. Also, I'd like to look, I'd like for you to look at the dress code for students and also staff. There are T-shirts with explicit language. And in addition to the language, just, how would you say it? Just graphics. But it's not just the teacher, students also teachers. Dropping my daughter up at school in the summer, I mean, I saw girls that had shirts that exposed like an entire meter. I just, I know we have policy, but I'd like to see some discipline and some follow-through on that. These are just a few of many items that come to mind. But as a parent, it is my hope that this school district would be filling the minds of our students with goodness and joy. That's how all of us in this room were educated and I believe that the kids in, in our schools right now deserve the same type of education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's, that's all we have for today.
That's all we have for today. Moving on to item 11 now, again. Angie?
Do you want to do the motion first?
I'm new. Trying not to be as bad as he was.
A little reminder.
Cheese and crackers. It is recommended the board approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sunbury and Big Walnut Local School District regarding any Sunbury police officer being assigned as a school resource officer to the Big Walnut Local School District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
I'll second.
I think usually the board president says.
She, she had it first.
Yes, Sherry. Open for discussion? Or actually?
Go now?
Yes, please explain.
Board members, you should have, this is an attachment. We had spoken with you previously, but just to kind of let the community know. As we were building the school and doing traffic study and having conversations with the then village, now city of Sunbury, one of the concerns was the traffic out here with the opening of the new high school. And so part of what was put into agreement was that we would provide traffic support in the morning through 2024. And so in meeting with Mayor St. John, City Council Member Fosse, Jeremy and I, and then we also had an opportunity to meet with Deputy Chief Wade from the Police Department. What we realized was with the special duty rate that we would have to pay, it would make more sense for us to actually hire a halftime person. So we're paying a regular pay rate and now we're getting other services for longer. Instead of paying their minimum time that we would have to pay just to direct traffic and not even really need that time because they have minimums, we would get a halftime person. So we still have our relationship with the Delaware County Sheriff's Office and our school resource officer, Deputy Snyder. But as we're growing and have now eight buildings and nine along with BWI when it converts, we definitely have a need for more support. And so we do have Officer Whiteside, we have seen him at ball games, he does a lot of the ball games. And he will be our halftime person. And so just to let folks know, because originally the conversation was around having him down at, I believe it was Fabro or DePaul, Jeremy?
Fabro.
Fabro and Miller to direct traffic. The city has requested that first we try to have him out here. He's actually controlling the stoplight right now. We're trying that. They think that's a better impact to try to control that traffic flow. Hasn't been too bad. I actually, the first day for kids, kind of got in the middle of it on purpose. It took me eight minutes from this traffic light to depart. So I didn't think that was too horrible for the first day and, and all the confusion. But it's going pretty smoothly so far. But I just want to make sure, especially folks living in that neighborhood, just to kind of be patient as we work through those tweaks. And wanted to let you know that's why the person's not there. It's dark in the mornings, it's hard to see him, but he's actually up with the stoplight. So so far that's going well. They also have had additional both Sunbury PD and Delaware County deputies on site to help us with traffic and just kind of giving us some recommendations for that flow. And we're going to touch base at the end of the month. And then also working with the principals with our new person on doing some of the, we have some programming for the kids that we do on different topics. And so looking at using Officer Whiteside to help with some of that. Halloween, safety, stranger danger, those types of topics that they, that they typically do with the kids. So looking at different ways that we can utilize him during just that morning timeframe that we have him. And then again, still continuing with Deputy Snyder. So this is the agreement. Thanks to Jeremy and Mark on, on our end, three of us trying to work through it with the city and looking at some of the language that was in the existing agreement we have with Delaware and also looking at some other SR agreements. And then it's already been approved by the city in December and we bring it to you for your approval today.
Discussions?
Any questions?
I, I have a comment while we're talking about traffic control. Friday, early dismissal, the one hour early dismissal at the high school. I was in the line and it was my first opportunity to do the drill. Cars were flying past the line. Cars were flying past the line. And that's not a three-lane drive there. So I just wonder, because there was a Delaware sheriff car sitting in the parking lot, and he came out, got in the car, and I was too far to even know who he was. Is there any way, under those circumstances, that there could be an officer there to help regulate that? I mean, if these people were flying.
Well, I don't know if it was an early dismissal too, if that was a lot of sorts, but I'll definitely talk to administration. Uh, not unless we pay.
Yeah.
So right now, we're paying with this, the, the morning, because that's when we did the traffic study, where the biggest impact was on, on the community. So back on our side, and again, obviously, as we work through that, I know Mr. Hall, I've seen him out there a few mornings. And obviously, it takes a little time to adjust, I certainly can share those concerns.
I think as it relates to this matter before us right now, my, uh, commendation to how you have thought through this process. I know it's been months in coming to actually arrive at a, an agreement with the city of Sunbury, uh, to provide this service and to provide this opportunity. I, I think with the opening of the school, it's, it's well timed, obviously, but in addition to that, the rethinking of resources in order to, uh, get that, that even if we were to do, and I think this is important for the community component of it, even if we were to do the hourly rate for, uh, the city to direct traffic, given the city's minimums based on their negotiated agreements, uh, we, we would be, we would be foolish because we're getting more efforts right now for essentially the same cost point. Uh, in addition to that, the other conversation that I would like to, uh, demonstrate some appreciation on is the idea of what it will look like with the city of Sunbury acting as an SRO for this district and the county sheriff's office acting as an SRO for this district. They're thinking through how to appropriately deploy both of those services, knowing that some of our schools, uh, don't actually reside within the city of Sunbury, but, but further out, uh, for instance, Highland Souder's Elementary. So appreciation there, and then, uh, just a, a word of caution or, or request, I guess, uh, to keep us informed if there are some of those moments of buttings of heads. And I don't know if it's, if maybe even Mrs. Nix was touching on one in terms of, uh, in the past, the sheriff's office has been very adamant that the SRO duty is not to direct traffic. So even as folks are speeding by, so thinking that through, like in those moments, I, I would be curious to know what those might be in the future.
I would say that the two groups, uh, and Delaware County Sheriff's Office was, was very on board. That there wasn't any, um, conflict there, they could be able to work well together, and their dispatchers are in the same room, so that makes it...
Oh, that's interesting.
So they're able to, um, when you talk about who's being deployed or there's a situation, obviously, they're on radio together, so. I think they're gonna work well together. They're kinda used to working together, uh, the deputies, and especially Deputy Snyder being in Sunbury for years now.
Sure. Thank you.
Annie, can you? Uh, I do have a question. When is our contract with the sheriff's office, huh?
This year.
I believe it's, yeah, I believe it's this year is when it comes to...
So it'll be renewed this year? Okay.
Yeah, and we met with, um, Deputy Chief Wade. I keep looking because, no. Chief Deputy, the sheriff, Deputy Chief, I suppose, is really confusing. Um, they are working on revising, if you didn't update, some things that have to be in there, I think, with the O R C. So they said they would get that to us soon.
Okay.
We've had that for a three-year term in the past.
That's the only question I had. No other questions?
Okay.
Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
And Mr. Crowe?
Yes. And that takes us to item twelve, scheduling the next board meeting. Regularly scheduled, uh, next board meeting will be January the twentieth at six thirty P M. Item thirteen. Executive session. It is recommended the board enter executive session to consider the employment appointment of a public employee or official.
So moved.
Pardon?
So moved.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes, confused.
Mrs. Dorsh? And Ms. Nix?
Yes.
Item fourteen, adjourned. It is recommended the board exit.
We'll do that, we'll do that after executive session.
Specifically on this, if you don't anticipate any more action after, yeah.
Right, we don't anticipate any other actions when we come out of executive session. And thank you all for coming.